Okay, this meeting is properly post. No normal post in places.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, motion's carried. We have student showcase.
We welcome up some of our sixth grade staff as well as sixth grade students to talk a little bit about their new learning environment. So, come on up, we'll go back here.
Well, good evening, thank you for having us tonight. The sixth grade classrooms have been fully remodeled and are very fortunate to be part of the flexible seating pilot. And we have new floor, I mean new carpet, new paint, new lights, new ceiling, new projectors, new furniture. And the furniture is flexible seating and the tables, all the chairs are very mobile and you can move them around, make different arrangements. The children have various options for what kind of chair they'd like to sit in. We have some soft seating in our rooms also. Hi, Michaela. And so, we are going to present to you, so, our thoughts about it, some survey results about what the students had to say about the new furniture as well. So, why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves?
I'm Sarah.
I'm Caroline.
I'm Lily.
I'm Gabby.
I'm Michaela.
And Mr. Klink, are you running our slides?
Sure am.
Right over there. So, we just have some pictures here of the hallway. There you go. These are the words that Mrs. Iwanski had made at Arrowhead High School. And they're in our hallway, they're in all of the hallways, right? Fifth grade, sixth grade, and upstairs in the seventh and eighth grade wing. And here are some of the classroom changes. And what was really wonderful was that the teachers were able to pick out their own color for the accent walls, so we each have different colors for our accent walls, and we all have the same color gray for the other three walls. Alright, so, the speech bubbles are some of the concept, the results from the survey. And sixth graders would you like to share what you've noticed when you came in for open house and how you feel about going into their rooms? Start down there with Sarah.
Well, their rooms are a lot brighter, and actually, when I came in, my mom said, "It's really bright in here." So, that's really nice, because you can see.
My parents said it was really bright in here too. I really like the new chairs. They're really comfortable and you want to get to class so that you can choose your chair.
It was very spacious compared to last year. It was very, it looked small, but now it looks bigger.
With the new furniture, you can actually bounce and spin around. And like, they added so much more decorations compared to last year too.
I liked how they had a new spark board projector, which made the spark board a lot more brighter. We didn't have to like shut off all the lights and turn it back on.
That's true. We don't, we can leave the lights on and you can see everything on the screen quite well, so that's, that's been great too. Okay, so, somebody mentioned about the seats move. Many of the seats do allow for some movement. Do you guys want to talk about which ones you like the best?
Well, I like the ball chair, because you can bounce up and down on it. But, when you're, so it helps you like try to get to class fast. But, you know, the teachers tell us not to like kill each other on the way there. So yeah, you want to get there fast.
I really like the hockey stools and the ball chairs. I like the hockey stools because you can move forwards and backwards and spin a little bit. And I like the ball chairs because they also allow movement, but they're comfortable to sit in instead of a hard regular chair.
I agree with Caroline where the ball chairs, because they're softer, so you're not like leaning up against a back that's hard.
My favorite is the one that you can just sit down. It has a backrest and you can like wiggle back and forth. You can get your wiggles out. And, or the ball chair too.
My favorite would probably be the regular chair, but it has the box under it, which allows you to rock back and forth, which makes it a bit more, I guess, stable. It makes it concentrate a bit more.
And that's really neat. That's what we found, is the kids have experimented and they've been able to find what works for them. And they just make those choices on their own, and it's pretty cool to see that.
And we do have some cafe high chairs, which is really nice, especially in sixth grade. We do have a variety of heights. So we have some students that are much taller than others, and so some that really like to have the taller chairs, so that they don't, they don't feel like they're just, you know, all scrunched up.
I'm standing them too.
Yes. Yes, the cafe high tables are great for standing, so they can stand inward as well. These are right from the survey. Mrs. Iwanski, I think we have the survey, right? So here's some data about which ones do you want more of in the classroom. The ball chairs are very popular. We each had two in our classrooms, and I think, Mr. Klink, we were, that the teachers were in agreement too, that we would like more of those as well. This one is, what do you think we could have less of in the classroom than the regular chairs? We do have some chairs that don't move. The shorter chairs don't move, the tall chairs don't allow for a way, like, but everything else does, so. So, this is Mr. Klink's room before. And that's his room after.
True.
Oh, it's Mr. Hannerhand's room, right?
Yeah.
This is my room. We are also allowed to pick out the tabletops that we wanted, the edging on the tables, the colors of the chairs, and the hockey stools as well. This is Ms. Pezzo's room. And I heard some of the sixth graders say this tonight, that they want to get to class, they want to get there and find a seat, they're excited, and they want to be there. Do you, does anyone want to say more about that? Caroline, would you like?
I really like that there's multiple of every chair, so if somebody takes one of them, you can see if there's another. And, another reason why I want more ball chairs is because everybody wants more of those, and everybody wants to get to the ball chairs. So it's kind of unusual if you actually get the ball chair twice in a row.
After me, I rush in there.
Sarah's got her spot.
Oh, well, you know, school's school, so, it's kind of like, come in. So with all the new chairs, you can like run into class, even though you don't want to be violent or hurt anyone. But then like, once you get to class, get your chair and like, you get all set up, and then they have these little hooks for your chrome hooks, you can put them on to at the desk, so.
I actually feel like I like the regular chairs better, just because with the new chairs, a lot of kids have been kind of, I wouldn't say violent, but kind of interprobing with them. Like, they've been flipping them, and I heard kids saying like the balls have been kind of ripped on the seams. And I feel like, and in the process of keep on keeping on using them, it could kind of cost more and a bit more on like keeping on to fixing them. So I feel like actually it'd be better if it was in the library, because I feel like in eighth grade, seventh grade, and fifth grade could use them. And if we put it in there, we can replace some furniture in the library with the new furniture, because then everyone could use them. And it'd be better for us to be reading, because then that would be more fun.
So this one is, I feel like the classroom design improves my learning. And some more closing thought. So, students all have their own opinions and preferences, and what's nice is that that's reflected now in the furniture, because there's many different options. They can have the regular chairs or the tall chairs, they have a lot of different options for their preference.
And we're of course excited that they're excited too for our rooms, so, everybody's happy.
Mr. Klink, you've been very quiet.
I was the planned spectator tonight. I'll bring Mr. Klink into this. I know, I think Caroline, somebody said there's a lot more room in the classrooms, right? This year? One of the things that our staff did, and I think it's the help of Mrs. Iwanski, is really took a look at how much teacher space was actually in a room. And we found that there was, basically, the, what this research would show is, what was it, twenty, fifteen percent?
Twenty to twenty-five percent.
Twenty to twenty-five percent was devoted just to teacher stuff. The desk, the bookshelves, the this, the that. If you can go to Mr. Klink's room, you can do the before picture. Mr. Klink and Mr. Hannerhand and all of our sixth grade teammates said, "Holy cow, there is a lot of teacher space in here." So, they decided they were going to take out the teacher space and make it a hundred percent almost kid space. So if you go to the new picture, Mr. Klink now has the little podium there, and he's got, where he's at right now is his conferring desk, basically where kids come up, and that's movable on wheels and things like that. And there's a small little table right there. That is Mr. Klink's teacher stuff. Because now, him and Mr. Hannerhand made an office. So they now have an office. So when we talk about more room, well, our teachers did make a very cognizant effort to say, "Let's make our classrooms for our kids." So, that really opened up an awful lot of space for everybody. And you'll see that same thing in Sarah and Becky's room. Becky's new to our school, so she didn't have a lot of things, and we just took all of it out. She didn't have a choice. And I know Sarah went, and Sarah did the same thing, and said, "Let's make our classrooms specifically for our kids, and let's find a different adult space from that standpoint too." So our staff, this is, this is a change for them too as well. And we did go in, and the board had a lot of the same questions about, well, what happens if there's only two of something? Caroline, you said, "Oh, I want to get there and get the bouncy chair or the soft seating, because Sarah's already there." But, and that's something we are going to invest more in. Last month, we talked about Mrs. Kowish's room for the sixth grade math. Does anybody have a sixth grade math in Mrs. Kowish?
I do.
So, the feedback that we received from the kids is going to help drive that purchase. So we do have more, we do have that soft seating coming, and that's going to be there. So, the balls that are starting to wear a little bit, we actually had the rep in, and we said, "This shouldn't be happening." So they are going to be replacing it with a more, a more durable vinyl, a more durable product. So we have brought that to the attention of the designers, so that will be fixed from that standpoint too as well. So, the other thing, when they talk about, you know, we, if you saw up there, they didn't need more standing height. You know, what do they want more of? Because we made sure there was a lot of different options. So there's, there's a lot of things like, because I think we've got probably standing height for about twelve kids. I think we think about, you know, a lot of the areas that either through the genius bars or through some of the standing seats. So we have really equipped those classrooms with, with a lot of standing options as well too, so. But this really is helping us drive a lot of those furniture future purchases, and a little bit later in the meeting, you'll hear a little bit more about a learning lunch that we want to bring to life for our seventh and eighth graders, so. Which you guys will be seventh and eighth graders here, so. Because now the challenge is, and I think Katie threw in one of our pre-meetings here this week, is, is, okay, what's the plan? Because these kids go from this, we are going to be advising the plan of bringing something to the board as we take a look at that seventh and eighth grade year as well, so. So thank you. Any questions from anybody? Thank you, girls, so much for coming in. Mr. Doggerton's got a little something for you. I've got something for you.
You're up.
Sarah? Mr. Klink, I do have something. You get something just for showing up. Do it for the rest of your meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, motion's carried. We have the management report to bill this. Chris is not here.
Does that mean we don't do it this morning?
Make a motion to approve the financial listing and bill. Financial report and bill listing. Check numbers, five five three six seven seven through five five three six seven seven for four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Direct deposit numbers, nine zero 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 four four eight two one through nine zero 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 four four nine three three, one hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. Direct deposit numbers, nine zero 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 four four nine three four through zero zero nine zero 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 four five zero four four for one hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Wire transfers, payroll liabilities, wire numbers, two zero one seven zero zero one one two through two zero one seven zero zero one two one, ninety-eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-one cents. Total payroll, three hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars sixty-one cents. Accounts payable, check numbers, five two four three seven through five two four nine zero for two hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. AP wire transfers, two zero one seven, zero zero one two two through two zero one seven zero zero one two six, nine thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and one cent. Credit card transactions, zero seven two zero, thirty-six thousand thirty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. And credit card transactions, one seven one eight zero 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 three six and one seven one eight zero 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 four five, forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. ACH direct deposits, one seven one eight zero 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 three seven through one seven one eight zero 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 six two, five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and nine cents. Total accounts payable of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents. Total disbursements, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand forty-five dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions, concerns? All in favor of approving the financial report and bill listing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion's carried. Delegation to be heard. I don't have anybody that would like to speak. So, we're moving on from that. To administrative report, do you have a donation?
Yeah, we would like to thank PTO for the donation in August for the Gaga pit materials. They purchased the structure in the wood in the amount of two thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. That is a hit, basically between the hours of eight o'clock and eight o'clock during football. That's the hit before football practice, and then as soon as after, everybody rushes over. So they've been a great addition to, to our playground, to our play, for our community, not only our schools too. So, a big thank you for, for the partnership with PTO in this, this great game.
Are there any issues with being concrete based?
Well, it's interesting. We were just talking about that. We met with a, we'll probably, we'll finalize that, but we're working on some turf being installed on the, on the concrete. So, in pursuit of a contractor for our, our playground, and he was talking a little bit about maybe we'll put some turf down, so. So that might be coming, maybe. More to come on that, okay? More to come on that.
I just wondered if we had ripped out a maze or anything in the?
No, first actual casualty numbers have been recorded.
It's in the weeds of all the other casualties.
Most kids get out, and they go, "It's not bad enough," and they get back in, so.
My football, football players get hurt a lot, and they haven't hurt none of the Gaga pits, so. Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve the donation from PTO for the Gaga pits. Gaga pits in the amount of two thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, motion's carried. Two personnel actions?
Yeah, we would like to thank Ian Melnick, a former student of ours who has worked for us the last several months, as he has, schoolwork has started to take a little bit, a little bit more, more time for him, so, we would like to thank Ian for his efforts and wish him the best of luck. So, just would like to present the letter of resignation of Ian Melnick, and just looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of resignation from Ian Melnick.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, ready to discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion's carried.
Dean, just as a quick follow-up on that, we do, we did send out an email to our families, because we are looking to replace that now. And if anyone knows of a high school student, preferably, we usually try to keep it within the Merton family, but if not, anybody who's looking for a really great part-time job, we've got one, so as a high school student, so, that's out there. For information, I have one piece of information I'd like to bring to the board, and that is basically the results, very preliminary results to our spring break survey. The region has, through the last several years, been having conversations about when do we have spring break? Many schools or many states have a set spring break, or regions have a set spring break. For us, it's always been kind of tied to the Easter holiday, either before Easter holiday or after the Easter holiday. Well, this year, Arrowhead and the consortium wanted to possibly be a little bit more aggressive and not wait for the region or the CISA area to possibly look at setting a firm spring break. So, the Arrowhead Feeders, in conjunction with some other local school districts who are ordering us, sent out to their families a spring break survey, and there were basically three questions on the survey. One is, would you like a consistent spring break year after year? And that consistent spring break would be labeled either the last week of March or the first week in April, okay? For that one question, we had eighty-one percent, and this was close to three hundred responses. So we had a good, good representation from Merton, but we had eight, over eighty-one percent said they would like a set spring break. And then further, the second question was, is would you support a consistent spring break if we would possibly, again, possibly, still allow, you know, typically the Friday before Easter and the Monday after Easter? Okay, because we just wanted to throw that out there too, to say, hey, how important would that be to folks, to keep those at that time? And we had eighty-eight percent of our families say yes, they would support that as well. The last question we asked was, is what would you prefer, right? Do you have the last week in March, or the first week in April, or no preference? And the largest response of thirty-eight percent was the first week of April. So that was only at thirty-eight percent. However, another thirty-seven percent was no preference. And we had twenty-four percent favor the last week in March. So, we will be taking this information to the Arrowhead superintendents as we look to take a look at a preliminary draft next month at the October. We'll take a look at the preliminary eighteen, nineteen school year for the students, and give that, show that to the board, and gather some feedback for approval in November. So, it looks like this is pretty consistent from what I'm hearing from the other K8s, as well as Arrowhead, that it seems like our community would really support a consistent break, and now we just have to set that as well.
What is the calendar impact for having a consistent first week of April and the Friday, you know, Good Friday?
That's, that is really the issue. The calendar impact for?
It seems like people don't really care about that, based on the percentages.
Correct.
It wasn't important.
It, if we don't go to school, and we'll get this more next, next month, but the Monday after spring break would be an added day off, okay? Because we've always had, for, for Merton, we've always gone the Friday before Easter and the following week. So we've always had six days off for spring break, right? With this type of scenario, if you give a week-long spring break, in addition to the two days sandwiching Easter, you now have seven. So, there is an impact there. When you take a look at many of the schools, like for instance, the private schools in our area who don't follow our spring break, they go back to school the Monday after Easter. So that's pretty typical. So, I, I think when you take a look at that question, Phil, that's something we're going to have to really wrestle with, is, is, do we go to school that Monday after Easter? Because that is an additional day off, because, or you're going to recoup that when?
Certainly, people would probably prefer to have the Friday off rather than the Monday, right?
Correct, yes, we would, correct. We would, we would look to have Monday off, and we have to take a look at dates, because that begins?
Friday off and go on Monday.
And go on Monday, right. Because we were, in our preliminary conversations, they were like, "Well, we should do that." Well, when you take a look at the private schools, they come back on that Monday. They, what would be called Good Friday, and then they come back to that holiday Monday, so, yeah. But that's going to be a question we're going to have to battle with, correct.
And then there'd be some years where, down Michigan, Easter is?
Curmated, correct, yep. Some years it'll line up.
If we go with the first week in April, then we possibly, if Arrowhead decides, it could be the last week in March.
Could be the last week in March, right. And we will go with what Arrowhead does, because I think Arrowhead's got some different motives as well, when you take a look at the athletic calendar, as well as possibly their academics prior to the AP testing. You know, instead of having, they prefer to have that break a little earlier, so then you've got a good four to five weeks prior to those first AP tests. So, it will be a community effort, but if Arrowhead moves forward and says this is our spring break, for instance, the last week in March, I would recommend we follow.
Take care of that issue of the years when we have late Easter, and then you've got that short period after Easter to end of the school year, which makes it a little tougher.
Right, right. Yeah, there's a lot of pros, and ultimately, it looks like our families are really in favor of, let's set it, let's get it right around that, that end of March, early April. And you're right, Dean, sometimes it's going to line up nicely where it's not affected. Other times, we're going to have a week off, and you're going to have four days back to school, and you're going to have Easter. That's just the way the ball rolls sometimes. But more to come on that. We'll have a proposed calendar out to the board in October.
Okay, we're on to comments.
Nothing to discuss, no committees. We will be, we do have a student achievement committee meeting on October eleventh, and we also will be setting a finance committee coming up here in October after we get, after October fifteenth, because we've got two more pieces to the, the finance puzzle coming in October first, is the aid, I'm sorry, property value. And the fifteenth, thereabouts, is the amount of state aid we receive. So, we'll bring the finance committee together, and then we'll also be pulling the facility together this upcoming month, really to take a look at what we've achieved in our ten-year plan.
Okay, we're on to the principals reports. Hi there.
I'm Mike, and he's Jay. Well, I want a little audience participation from the board. This guy, Kenny is obviously pushing my whole tune of sound tonight. What do you consider to be a good start for a, for a school district as a school board? What do you consider, what's a, a piece of criteria that you go, "It was a good start." We have ours, but what do you say? What do you think when someone says, "How did the school year start?" What do you say?
Well, I was fed a little information. I was really impressed with your attendance the first day at school. I think you had two in the primary building out, and you had a hundred percent?
Yeah.
That, that's incredible start. That's parents that are engaged with their children. Education's important. So that, that to me is great.
Great idea.
Being fully staffed, right?
That's good.
Because sometimes that's an issue. You know, having the facilities ready to go. There's always last minute, you know, trying to remodel the library. Not such an inside joke.
Not such an inside joke.
Literally.
That, right, I mean, I know John and the rest of the team were busy the last couple of days before school started trying to get everything off and done, up and ready.
Great. Thank you.
Higher participation in the family night.
Hmm.
Yep. How about no pins? You spoke too soon.
That's a feedback they're getting. The positive fire always hanging.
Good. Well, Jay and I thought it was one of the best ever. And then, as you can see there, those are the things that, that we rely on. And for the primary school, the first fire drill was always interesting. And when the map mainframe had a hiccup on Wednesday and Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, we bumped our time, so they bumped the, the fire drills, so everybody had a chance to finish their map with a good time. But our first fire drill was, was darn good, so those were, those were great.
I, I just, our staff in both buildings just goes above and beyond. I, I don't think people can see it on the outside. You have to be around and see it all the time. So, I encourage you, if you have an opportunity, to come in and just see our staff work, because you'll just be, you'll be amazed. And at the intermediate school, we have family information nights for our fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade families. And the fifth grade night was in here, and you guys don't even come close to the fans. We had two fifth grade families right here, the right questions asked of our entire fifth grade staff. It's just a nice, nice way for them to get started. Our, our Merton mentors with our National Junior Honor Society really made those fifth grade kids feel like they were part of the school right away from the start. So, that was all really good. And I just, I just can't say enough about the attitude of our kids, the politeness of our kids. When you hold the door and they say thank you, when you come up by five in the lunch line and they say thank you, when they're not, when they're number six, realizing they're number one next, because I can only count to five. So, that's just an inside joke too, Phil. So, you can't get all the kids through the lunch line at one time. And they've, they've been able to handle the new, the new lunch menus really well. And it's just, it's just been going, it's been going really smoothly.
Can I have a principal's report without flashing the library a little bit? There's just a couple of shots. I can see the kids in the corner with the book. That was an orientation day with Mrs. Waller, with a couple of third grade classes. And then the, the tree, which will become an icon for years to come. But those are a couple of terrific shots lately. And, and the library has become this major hub of what's going on in our school with some of the things that the sixth grade staff was telling about. Their, their space, the library will become that kind of space in the primary school. And here were a couple of shots of kids in our, in the bookroom, scanning their books they're using for readers workshop. And so, we have Jen Roundhouse there helping out the kids. And so, the books are on the shelf, and as the kids go through different genres and different uses of study, they're able to check out the books to fill their book boxes. And here, Jen is training them to do that, so no more responsibility for the, for the students.
Mrs. Roundhouse has been unbelievable with our intermediate school library getting that organized. And the bookrooms at both schools, it's just been phenomenal. Everything, she dots every i and crosses every t and makes sure everybody knows exactly what they're supposed to do so that all the books come back for all the kids to be able to use at a later time.
And since this came up...
That was not today, because there was no sweatshirts today.
You know what? I thought, I thought I'd bring back a little bit of Wisconsin weather and how it's going to be on Thursday or Friday. Yes, but it's just a little back on, and there's play and action. Yet, it's kind of speaks for itself. One thing I had concerns about is how the kids would take care of the game. And for the most part, they're doing a heck of a job. And I'm really proud of them. And the only thing I wish I could do better of is getting kids to play in there with just tennis shoes, not flip flops or sandals or those kinds of things. But other than that, it's been, they've been having a great time. And so, it's, thanks for, for our Gaga Pets.
So, I have just a few pictures here that I was going to show. In the upper left-hand corner, that's our, our mentors. As the fifth graders come in on the first day, they, they make this tunnel every year. So, the kids all come in, so their first high fives and fist bumps and all going through. The middle picture here is our seventh and eighth grade staff. And I already sent this presentation to you. If you click on where it says Merton Way, there's a YouTube video. Katie Francour wrote a, wrote lyrics to a song that the kids will never want to sing again, that used to be really popular to them. But it's all about the being kind and be safe, do your job. And the staff got out and danced. It was a hoot. I really wish I'd taken a video, but they had a really good time. On that same day, this picture up here, these are all the seventh and eighth graders. They're in small groups doing some cooperative activities. So, the first part of the day, they saw all, went all over their classes. The second part of the day, they talked about the Merton Way and, and have the school pride and so on. Down here, we have some of our readers. That's one of those cafe tables they were talking about. Mrs. Kuvish in her room, she's just done a great job coming in to take over the extra section of fifth and sixth grade. I hope you got that letter from Mrs. Jones and the fifth and sixth grade teachers about supporting our small class sizes in math and language arts. We really appreciate that. Here's some fifth graders who found some company fire safe bean bags to read on. Just thought I'd throw that one there. Mr. Wagner here doing CPR, that circle power of respect. He does that within the first couple of weeks of school. And he teaches kids how to accept a positive comment and how to give a positive comment, because that's not always very easy to do. And then the last page here, the top part are, is Google Expedition in Mrs. Nibcheck's social studies room. So, on September 11th, they took a tour of, of the site, the memorial, the 9/11 memorial and part of the museum. That was really kind of cool. This one here, oh, that's, that's a Miss Francour in Mrs. Hess's room. They're jotting some things during their mini lesson. Down here is Annie Booker shooting marjorie. I am behind all of the kids when they shoot the arrows. And then down here were some sixth graders who went out and did some isometric drawings in the, just outside in the hallway. And here is the one and only Mr. Clink. We had an assembly at the end of, actually, very early on Wednesday morning, our second Wednesday. And we talked about school pride, and we, we had our cheers and all of that. And I asked the staff to mention what they were proud of. And I handed out a few microphones in the, in the gym, and Mr. Clink took over for a little while. And it was very heartfelt. He was just very proud of the sixth graders that had moved on to seventh grade, the new sixth graders that they have. But it's just amazing when you get all the kids there and you get some of the staff talking about how proud they are of the kids and how they just keep remembering that. So, that was really a cool day. You were in there for a little bit.
Were you?
Yeah, yeah. That's it.
And to wrap up the, a little bit of, a little bit of humor. That's not really a Darby, my friend. But the guys have just been, and the ladies have just been tremendous as far as making our schools look absolutely terrific. And so, there's Darwin early in the morning, when nobody can see him working. He's just about 6:55. He was drilling away, hanging this thing, and I thought it would be, it was, it would be fun to see him in action, because he's, he's behind the scenes and does a lot of work behind the scenes. So, he shows you got a pretty good ladder already going while hard he's working. So, this is Darwin, and he's still there trying to get out. That's it.
Thanks, thank you.
Question. What, what are you hearing from the kids on chart wells so far?
I haven't really not heard much, one way or the other, to be completely honest with you. They still have the choices. I, I really haven't heard anything in our school. I mean, and I'm in the lunch line every day, and I haven't heard... The only thing I heard was one of the chicken things. He said, well, that really wasn't very good. I said, well, every once in a while, we have a bad meal. I get that. But I had the same thing when we had Avian's. I'm never going to get that again. So, yeah. They like the pizza, the, the new pizza is really a big thing.
The bread, they're like, why can't we bring back the old bread for the sub sandwiches? Because that was a Subway or a Cousins or whatever it is. It doesn't quite meet our guidelines. So, participation is positive, very, very positive. And obviously, we're wrapping up our first month. But when we took a look at the first week, in this building in particular, very, very high. We were close to 70, 75% participation in this building. That was the first week with the new, with the new offerings and things like that. So, I know we continue to work with Avian's, or not Avian's, Chartwells, because we have a Froyo machine coming. So, as soon as we can get that all taken care of from a power standpoint, so we'll be able to sell that from an à la carte as well. I've got a fifth grader and a seventh grader, and they love the pizza. You know, my daughter's like, hey, I love that. They continue to change the grill up a little bit more, because that way she can get meatball subs and chicken nuggets on certain days. I said, okay. But I guess it, really, the proof will be in the pudding about when we take a look at participation as well. And this first month typically is a lower month of participation, because they're trying to figure out menus, just like, just like they are, just like our kids are. And then ultimately too, in September, we, we see a lot of, you know, especially at the primary school, where our moms and dads want to really be, I'm going to bake their lunch, and they're going to do it. And then all of a sudden, that becomes a little tired and just, go get hot lunch. They grab and go. I know I've heard some kids talk about it. It's nice just being able to just grab something quick and go at this building too as well, so.
Breadsticks.
Breadsticks.
Huge. Breadsticks are great. That first week. Wow. That's all I kept hearing was about breadsticks.
Katie asked a question too about, hey, what have we heard? When we switch to Avian's, I heard a lot. I haven't heard really any formal this month.
Is that a lot of negative?
From Avian's? Negative.
Question about your beanbag chairs. Do those have some kind of layered poop tag?
You'll have to talk to Mr. Nedshine, because he worked with PTO on those purchases. I guess they were all fire code proper.
Do, do they have a tag on them?
California rating.
I'm just, we got to make sure that they, they do, that we don't lose those tags.
Right.
Because...
If you kind of mock, you go to jail there.
Mr. Clink won't, he'll be out, he'll be out the door if he walks in here with a tag during...
You're killing me.
But you know, I know it's, it's been a tough adjustment, but our staff has adjusted very, very well to our new expectations, not only from the district, but the B and G department, because it has been a change. It really, really has. And they, they've embraced it. You guys have helped with that though too, for, for supporting, you know, other opportunities, you know? So, we took out a beanbag. We did the very best we could to replace that beanbag. Jackie Conner, for instance, our guidance counselor, had a lot of soft seating. So, we replaced the soft seating. So, Mary was very active in that too, in pursuit of using some other... I mean, we didn't go through very, very high, you know, Wayfair and some of those other places that we, we were able to really leverage some of that stuff, because it doesn't have to be super, super durable, some of those other office areas that we needed to replace, because it was going to be more light use compared to like a library, where it's used over and over and over. So, yeah, off to a good start. So, our next up, I got a little presentation for everybody. We want to stay right here. First, first agenda item is furniture and, and facilities. So, we, well, Jay's pulling it up. And again, I talked to the board a little bit about this. But what we would like to do is begin to really entertain creating a seventh grade learning lounge. And when we think of a learning lounge, what we've been looking at for our seventh and eighth graders is trying to create an open space, a very flexible space. Many spaces in which that we have available throughout our school. But when we think about our upstairs at the intermediate school, we don't have that ability. So, what we're looking at from an administrative team and even from a staff is creating a seventh and eighth grade learning lounge. Now, for those of you that aren't familiar, it's basically our second floor. Right now, what we're looking at is, there's one interior classroom. And that interior classroom, right now, is currently used only second, third quarter for health class every other day, because that's when we deliver health to our seventh and eighth graders. The, the other piece to that is, is during the middle of the day, right after lunch, we have study hall in there. So, we are taking a look at utilizing all of our spaces and seeing how we can bring a large group area, bring it to life, and really make it multifunctional. So, a couple of things we did before we get to a floor plan, thank you, Mr. Poseck, is, first of all, we want to utilize our space. But we ultimately want to create flexible, engaging spaces where our kids want to go engage with each other, engage with a book, or just be comfortable in another learning environment. And what we feel like is, is when we take a look at other areas of the building, we think of sixth grade. And you even heard how one of our students said, boy, you know, I kind of feel bad that we only get to use it, and it's not the library or anything. Well, the sixth grade utilizes the library quite a bit. It's right out their doors. They can go in, flexible spaces, soft seating, curl up and read a book, or let's be collaborative together. And that's really what we're really trying to design. So, what we are really proposing, oops, I think here, is, is what we were proposing is this idea of a learning lounge. We asked our seventh and eighth grade staff, what would you do if we took down those walls? What would you do if you had a flexible space that would be available 24/7? We can use it for community, but what would they use it for? All right. Would you send students there? Well, again, on a scale of one to four, I would, a lot is four. One is, I wouldn't think about it. The one person who said, well, I don't know if I don't, that was a science teacher. He said, well, I've got everything I need in my own area. So, again, all of them, eight, I should say not all, eight people were agreeable to it. Would you envision using instruction for that space? Again, we had our science teachers say, well, I really don't see a need for that possibly. Our co-taught, one of our co-taught RLA staff said, well, I really, I don't need that space to teach in, because I've already got a very large space. But it does give some flexibility to the rest of the group up there. Okay? Would you use this, this space for students before school, after school? So, again, another flexible space where kids can go and meet with staff or work, whatever it might be, before school, after school, lunch, another, another big area for us to work in. Then we also asked our staff, if we were to do this, what kind of furniture would you like to be placed in there? Soft seating was a big one. Need table space, standing options. Desks weren't that big of a deal, because again, we've got that in our own areas. Traditional chairs, and then some alternative chairs. Alternative chairs being the wobble chairs or those ball chairs that our sixth graders love so much. So, kind of envisioned that going up in that area. We even asked them what they want for colors if we were to do something. So, these are colors. So, number three, if you take a look at option three, which looks very similar, actually, earring to our sixth grade furniture. But that's where they thought they would like to, to kind of start. The color palette will be down there. So, our teachers highlighted they could use small group, relax and flexible area that, that, that part of the school doesn't have. So, if we did want to do some flexible things, there's sit and soft seating. Because right now, seventh and eighth grade, they have chairs, traditional chairs. That's it. So, that's why it would be a relaxed and flexible area to be part of the school that we don't have with it. Not like the library, they just can't view out in the library like sixth grade camp. Alternative to students working or lying in the hallways. They've got a place to go. Reward environment, book clubs, outside of school activity meetings. Okay? Place to hold our National Honor Society, a place to hold our student senate meetings. An alternative place for instruction. And we also talked about that peer tutoring, tag with that aspect. Again, just a place where we can say, why don't we go here and let's work and be productive. Community multifunctional space. And here's another, should have to check it out, because we want to use it, but we want to go there when it's open. Include whiteboards for instruction, want bulletin boards, tackle services to continue to displace student artwork. Mix of seating options, including some traditional chairs for the adults. A refrigerator for items for students to bring, bring to class, or they store them in the lounge or the health room. Believe it or not, there are still, especially in our Spanish area, Becky Alman is just so excited about this, because that's right outside of her room. And Mary and I were giggling about the refrigerator, and she's like, oh yeah, we need it. Science needs it and things like that for some freezing patients. So, so that leads us to basically what we've been doing to try to gear up with this. So, we've been gathering some information. And that information includes basically, what do we have to do from a facility standpoint to make this happen? Okay? The, the, the big dream and the big, the big idea would be to conduct this work, take down the walls, or make this space... take down the walls, or make this space, basically, the month of December. Okay? The walls that we would be possibly looking to tear down, we can do all the work within the space, while, while our students can continue to move in and out of classrooms, because they've got multiple avenues to get in and out, based on some of these classroom design work there. So, John's been working with some contractors, and when we took a look at the scope of the project, John said he could be the general, because basically, we have to demo, if we go this route, we'd have to demo a wall, demo two walls, and a door, with John, his team, including Jay, myself, and anybody else. And Jim's like, yeah, he'll get a sledgehammer, Mary. Anybody else who's interested. We would demo the site ourselves, and because if we demo the wall, we would have to replace the ceiling, we'd take the ceiling out. We even can, the, the carpet, the floor surface is still very usable, so we would repurpose those in other areas of the district. So, we would do the complete demo. After you do the complete demo, then you're talking about a ceiling contractor, you're talking about a carpet contractor, you're talking about a painter. That's it. That's it. All in which John would, would really coordinate all of those, those different contractors coming through. So, that's just one option that we have. Another option that was brought, and I know the, the board, and I've been talking to Nate and Randy, they talked about the opportunity, or what would be, what would happen if we tore those walls down? You know, when we talk about the futuristic, you know, what happens if enrollment goes up? Because right now, it's not a space where we need for, for a specific formal and traditional classroom. That, that is an option, and actually, we had Steve McGuire here, because we do have those current walls. Steve was called in by John, he showed up today, and we did kind of...